Tonight's November 5th, 2018, and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Tonight on our special meeting agenda, we have an update on our buildings from our Public Works Department. Welcome Director Borden, as well as Mr. Lee from our Public Works Department. And if you care to give our presentation with regard to the condition of our buildings and the assessments, we'd be very happy to receive it. Welcome. Oh, thank you very much. I was reminded by Councilmember Scharf to conduct roll call. And so Kirsten, if you could please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Barry Chang.
Here.
Councilmember Steven Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Sevita Vajjanathan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rod Sinks is absent. Mayor Darcy Paul.
Here. Alright, thank you Kirsten, and thank you Councilmember Scharf. Roger, welcome. Tim, welcome. And I think it will be receiving the study session information now.
Very good. Good evening Mayor, members of council. Roger Lee, Assistant Director of Public Works. Very nice to be here. Appreciate you taking and providing this time for this important topic of our city buildings. Prior to starting this project, we knew that expensive maintenance costs at a number of our buildings were anticipated. This is due to many of our city buildings are over 30 years old, and systems are either reaching or have already been extended past the end of their serviceable lives. Also, we have increased occupancy of our buildings due to staff, and community program increases are pushing systems beyond their original design. And we also know that community needs change. And prior to expending significant dollars on a building, we need to make certain upcoming building replacements are anticipated, or if certain buildings are in line to be expanded, we need to know that in advance of doing this expensive maintenance work. So the purpose of this assessment, when complete, is to recommend and prioritize what maintenance, replacements, and improvements should be completed at a facility, given its age, condition, and its future use. So currently, the city expends about $3 million annually on building maintenance services and products. The expenditures range from removal and replacement of systems to increasing building efficiencies to keep the roofs from leaking. Some work is low-cost annual preventative maintenance, while other work is expensive, replacement of systems that may last for decades. So this assessment evaluated all of our buildings, 205,000 square feet, distributed among 51 different sites. As different level of details and recommendations were needed among our buildings, we divided our buildings into two categories, and you'll see these in the slides. Primary and secondary. Primary buildings included City Hall, Senior Center, Sports Center, Quinlan Community Center, and the Service Center. Secondary buildings were all the others.
Well, I'm supposed to change here?
I'm gonna get it. You're gonna see all this, Stephen. So in this presentation, and for, in the effort to save time, only the secondary buildings of Blackberry Farm, McClellan Ranch, and Montevista Community Center are discussed. Designations of primary and secondary are the result of how these buildings are utilized during an emergency event, as well as how these buildings are used day-to-day by the public. So the next slide will discuss the overall scope of the project. And so what we had is an evaluation of all of our city buildings, looking at these various elements at each of these buildings. So when you look at site, civil, and landscape, and you see these designations in latter slides, you know, think of the parking lot, the sideways, the sidewalks leading from the parking lot up to the building. Think of the landscape, how the storm drain works. Those are all parts of that element. The exterior envelope would be the walls of, say, this building, the doors, the windows. And that extends to the next bullet of the roofing, sort of what makes that whole envelope of the building. That was all reviewed. As well as the structure, so how the building is holding up to codes when it was built, how it compares, say, to codes that are applicable today on the structure. The interior elements, that could include just how work areas are divided, from your wall coverings to how you can control visual privacy or acoustic privacy is all part of the interior elements. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. Besides your heating, ventilation, air conditioning, water heaters, boilers, all the things that are mechanical in the system. And then with the American Disabilities Act, just how we are in compliance with that requirement at our buildings. So the evaluation of how efficiently our current space is being used, this is a little bit different than a typical building condition assessment, because we also wanted to know how efficiently we use the spaces that we have. Because, you know, we're gonna be spending quite a bit of dollars to maintain the facilities, and oftentimes, we may need more room in our buildings. So it's important to know how well we're using them, and compare those to some industry standard. We also received and analyzed public staff input regarding building satisfaction. So we did this through OpenGov with the public at City Hall, the Senior Center, and Quinlan Community Center, and with Google Doc surveys that we completed with all the department heads and staff throughout the city. And then ultimately, you know, really the end-work product of this assessment is to develop a 10-year capital improvement program that establishes our priorities for the next 10 years. And because this is a very comprehensive plan, this is not something that we would be doing but maybe every 10 years. We would freshen it up, say, every five years. And prior to going into an operating budget recommendation, we would look at the things that we have done, what's been accomplished, and what our needs are. But this is a very robust assessment that we're getting near to completing. So the next slide describes the process that we used to complete the project. So every building, so all 205,000 square feet at the 51 sites, was inspected inside and out by our consultant, the KPA group, and I'm gonna introduce them here shortly. And because their principal and their project assistant was at each and every one of our sites. And in addition to that, because there is so much value in just historical knowledge from our staff, we had either a retired annuitant who had many years in working at Cupertino facilities accompany them, describing, you know, what were his worries at each and every site, where the maintenance issues were. That occurred. And when that individual wasn't available, we had one of our seasoned facilities person accompany him.
Can I interrupt you? Was there a previous 10-year plan or anything?
This is the beginning.
This is...
It's the first that I'm aware of.
We've never done it before. Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. This is the first plan. And also, in previous completed studies, you know, we didn't want to have to reinvent the wheels. If we had studies that showed the seismic conditions, say, at City Hall, or the electrical equipment condition at City Hall, we used those. And we incorporated that, gave it to their consultant, and it will be part of the final report as we go forward. Sorry, I didn't switch my own page. And as far as surveying of department heads and staff, you know, that just goes back into how efficiently we're using our space and the overall utility with ourselves. And we spent a fair amount of time, you know, doing that with everyone. We had two-day charrettes with department heads and staff. And that's the last two bullets. So the next slide is gonna be with Ken. And I want to introduce our Fleet and Facilities Supervisor, Mr. Ken Tenasi. Ken has been our Fleet Facility Supervisor for the last year. And Ken is responsible for all facilities and fleet within the city. But now, previously, Ken worked for the City of San Jose for 30 years. And he was a division manager responsible for their facilities for 11 years. And so anything that wasn't a non-enterprise building in the City of San Jose was Ken's responsibility. So he's very much a facilities professional. We're very lucky to have Ken involved with this project and involved with implementing it as we go forward. And I think Ken will also have an important role if we have to coordinate interim space for a building while we potentially rebuild another. Ken would be very good with the logistics of handling that.
Very good. Thank you.
So Ken's gonna present the next six slides, and will show how the building systems were evaluated, and what building qualities were determined to be a priority. And then following Ken will be Mr. Paul Powers. And Paul, maybe you can put up your hand. So Paul is the principal for the KPA group, and he'll present the six slides that follow Ken. Now, Paul is an architect, and has been the lead consultant on this assessment. And again, he's been at every one of our facilities. He's currently, his firm is doing assessments for Humboldt County, the City of Gilroy. And they've done work in San Jose State, San Mateo County. And I feel we've had a very good relationship with Paul's firm. And Matt Evans is a project assistant working for Paul, and he's been very helpful as well. So with that, Ken, why don't you get started up, and we'll get into slide number four.
Can I ask you one question?
Please.
Do we put away reserves for major repairs like roofs and HVAC, or is it just we pay as we go?
We don't do that specifically, but the city does have some program reserves.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm gonna take you through a few photos and kind of elaborate on some of the building elements that Roger had summarized. We had to come up with a way to be able to categorize different repairs. The three slides that you're looking at, or the three photos that you're looking at currently, they're all from Quinlan. The site, civil, and landscaping, what we're really looking for is drainage and grading issues, potential pedestrian hazards like cracked sidewalks and things of that nature, and looking to prioritize those improvements, as well as parking lots, deteriorating conditions, and things of that nature. In my first year with City of Cupertino, I've noticed that there have been a lot of investments, which is a really prudent way to go. City Council has, Mayor and City Council have approved parking lot improvements over at the McClellan Ranch Preserve. That's just an example of some of the timely improvements that the city has invested in that has factored into the condition assessment. The exterior envelope, as Roger had mentioned, it's really looking at the waterproofing of the doors and the windows, as well as the overall condition of the building exterior. Let's see, on the roofing, we're looking for any kind of waterproofing issues there. There were some very timely investments at Memorial Park, the playground restroom, as well as the Blackberry Farms Trail restroom building that, again, Mayor and council were very instrumental in investing in a timely manner to preserve those facilities. Next slide. We also took a close look at the structures of facilities. A lot of the facilities have been built pre-1990, when seismic codes were not as stringent. So our findings are that, you know, there are some improvements in those areas, and they can be more costly. But it's not flourishing throughout all of the buildings. Interior elements, we have a picture there of the Senior Center, some of the interior improvements there. This is an area that City of Cupertino has done extremely well. You can see in this room alone that there have been a lot of improvements in some of the interior finishes. And the conditions reflect a lot of the investments in those areas. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, these are really the heart and soul of all facilities. These systems will be the systems that will make sure that programs continue to operate. And investments in these areas are really, really critical. Some of the investments that were made recently were the library circuit breaker replacement. During last summer's heat wave, we had a failure at that facility, so there was some monies approved to replace that circuit breaker, as well as doing some HVAC or air conditioning upgrades over at City Hall. Lastly, the ADA compliance slide is from McClellan Ranch, where, again, you could see an example of significant improvements that were done to that site, as well as to the blackberry pole and kiosk entryway. We're really looking to see how well the compliance is for ADA measures. So that's kind of a summary of the building systems that we evaluated. So as we're going through the different projects and measures, we needed to develop a prioritization system that we could utilize to basically rank all the different projects. The first area that we took a look at was the health and safety. The real two underlying considerations were just protecting the city's citizens and employees from injury, as well as reducing the city's liability. In addition, we really took a close look at analyzing the life-safety systems of each of the facilities and making sure that those systems are evaluated against current codes. The reliability and resiliency, this is really about just making sure that city programs continue to operate. This is very much consistent with the mechanical, electrical, plumbing evaluations that we had discussed earlier. And then we have the efficiency. This is really tied to optimizing the use of natural resources, whether it be water, electricity, any of those, as well as implementing current technologies. Again, since a lot of the facilities were constructed prior to 1990, there have been a lot of technological improvements that the city can take advantage of. So in addition to the priorities, we had to come up with a system, and this is pretty consistent with a lot of condition assessment studies. It's a 1 to 5 rating system, where 5 indicates an excellent condition, all the way to a numeric rating of 1, which indicates that a system is in a failed state and needs to be replaced immediately. On the slides, you'll see that these are, that there are several examples of very excellent or ratings of 5, as well as areas that need immediate attention. Under site and civil and landscape, we have the Senior Center pathway improvements that were recently completed. Those were very important, not only with regard to the easy use for some of the folks that utilize that site, but also for the safety in terms of entering back into the parkway. There were some truncated domes or some measures for the visually impaired to make sure that they don't walk into oncoming traffic unexpectedly. So that was a very good example of some very smart programming. Next to it, we have Blush Property, where we're currently considering potential for use. You'll see that in that area, there's a lot of potential pedestrian hazards. We have some money programmed to address a lot of those issues. On the exterior envelope, again, we'll see Quinlan Community Center, very attractive, well-updated, waterproof as well. And then on the right slide, you'll see the Montevista Preschool, where some of the wood siding there is actually deteriorating and is in need of repair. For the roofing, we have an example of the McClellan Ranch Preserve Nature Museum, which was recently re-roofed. And then on the right slide, you'll see an example of some ponding that is under a mechanical piece of equipment at City Hall, which we could expect to probably cause some leaking in the very near future. Moving to the structural area, we have the Blackberry Farms kiosk, brand-new facility built to current codes. And then on the other side of the scale, we have the McClellan Ranch barn, that in addition to having some exterior envelope issues, also has some structural issues. For the interior elements, we have the Quinlan Community Room, very well upgraded. Lighting was improved, things of that nature. And then to the right, as a 1 on the scale, the 1 to 5, we have the Blackberry Farms Pool Chemical Room. Let's see, for the mechanical and electrical and plumbing systems, we have some ductwork or some air conditioning improvements that were, that exist over at the Montevista Preschool. And then on the right, something that needs to be, needs to have some attention paid to it is the Senior Center air conditioning unit. Let's see, and then on the ADA compliance, we have, again, the Blackberry Farms entryway improvements. And then as an example of a project that will be programmed in the 10-year CIP, the gift shop entry at McClellan Ranch. Overall, again, the condition of the City of Cupertino's facilities shows signs of a consistent investment in its building infrastructure. There are some costly repairs that Mr. Powers will be speaking to here shortly. So although we've done a very good job, there's still some work to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Paul Powers to talk about summary of findings on some of the study elements.
Thanks, Ken. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers. Paul Powers, President of the KPA Group. Maybe before I get into my comments, your staff has been extremely respectful and helpful throughout this project. We appreciated that. It made our job a lot easier to have people that knew a lot about these facilities to come with us. There was a lot of time invested by them. There was a lot of knowledge gained. In, I've been doing this now 32 years. I primarily do public architecture. I've looked at a lot of buildings in my career. We have another community where we're assessing a little over 240 buildings. We have another community where we're assessing 35. We have another one where we're assessing about 70. And I can tell you, in the state of where you are, you have done an excellent job with your facilities compared to other communities. I encourage you to maintain that investment. I can tell you that your investment is paying off, because when we're looking at these other communities and how much they're having to spend over the next 20 years just to catch up is significant. So you've done a really good job up to this point to invest and maintain your facilities. Primarily, they're in very, very good shape across the board. We're finding, you know, facilities in good condition. And that doesn't mean that you don't have things to do, but comparatively, you're in good shape. And I encourage you to do that. At this point, I think our reports, you know, are stacked about that high. That's about how much information we've collected and put for you tonight. We're summarizing that information. I'm sure you don't want to go page by page. As was mentioned by Roger, we looked at it from a primary facility and a secondary facilities. The primary facilities being the ones that are important to the operations and, you know, particular emergency operations of the city and the day-to-day operations. Those include City Hall, Quinlan, the Senior Center, Sports Center, the Service Center. We did an extensive look at City Hall. We know a lot about your existing City Hall. We pretty much know, you know, what's wrong and how to fix it, should you choose to fix your City Hall instead of replace it. If you choose to fix your City Hall, it's gonna cost you about $13 million just to get it up and running. Even if you did that, you're probably 25 to 35% less space than you need to operate City Hall going forward. So that's something you want to consider. We looked at 51 facilities, a little over 200,000 square feet. I'm gonna flip the page here to some of the other primary facilities. Quinlan, Community Center, the Senior Center, Sports Center, Service Center. We did a ranking, 1 to 5, and just as, maybe just as an overview here, just to give you a sense of that ranking. Quinlan comes in at a 3. Senior Center comes into the 3. Sports Center is probably one of your lower facilities in terms of need, and that's about a 2.5. Your Service Center, which you desperately need to invest some money in the Service Center, that's the backbone of your city. It needs some help in order to help that maintenance staff that's been doing such a great job for you to continue to do that wonderful job that they're doing. So there needs to be investment there. We ranked that at about 2.6. So the conditions at the primary buildings, this slide here, as discussed, we looked at this in the category of the site civil landscape, the exterior of the building, the structure of the building, the interior elements, mechanical, electrical, and then ADA. If you look through our slides here, you'll see ADA is in the no category, meaning you do not comply, and that's across the board. So there's lots of work to do in ADA. But I'm gonna focus a little bit on the structural column. That structural column goes to that primary category of safety, structure of safety. We know the land here shakes a bit, and you can kind of see that. Whereas the right hand, there's a combined rating of the facilities. There's no weighting given to the categories, so it's just an average. For example, I would not rate structure at the same weight as I would civil landscape, right? It'd be a higher weight. So if we weighted those, you just gotta be kind of careful when you look at that chart statistically. You kind of want to just stay in the column and just kind of compare it. For example, if you look at the structure of City Hall at a 2.1 versus the, you know, the Senior Center at a 3, the Senior Center is quite significantly better than City Hall. City Hall needs some work. The Sports Center being the lowest category on that list structurally. There are some issues in the Sports Center that should be repaired and brought up to speed. Let's go to that next slide there. So a couple of buildings. So our effort here was not to talk or to go after the aesthetics of buildings. It was more to look at the condition, the assessment of the facility. So when we're discussing these things, like the City Hall lobby interior renovations, we're not looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint. We're looking at it from a space utilization standpoint, or from a standpoint of what could you do better in City Hall. We've done some diagrams to try to move some things around at City Hall. There's some, you know, there's some significant space in there that can be repurposed to get some better efficiency out of City Hall and City Hall itself. There's a generator in City Hall that should be outside, should not be inside, needs to be replaced. That's a pretty significant investment. The Senior Center, there's some valleys and ridges that, you know, rodents get in that should be cleaned up. Roofs are in various conditions. You know, that's one of the first investments. You want to make sure you, you know, invest in your roofs, because that water damage can get in there. All kinds of bad things happen when that happens. So you want to make sure that you keep an eye on that drainage and the parapets in the roofing. Conditions at the secondary buildings. So we looked at the secondary buildings in many of the similar ways. Mostly, those were the parks, storage sheds, restrooms, you know, within the parks. We rated all of those. Like mentioned, we looked at 51 buildings. A lot of the, you know, we've kind of combined them there when we're looking at a park or, you know, a property, just to summarize the report here tonight. But it'll give you an idea of, you know, Memorial Park at a 2.65 versus Portal Park at a 2.7. So that says, well, they're about the same. And then as you look through the categories, you know, top line to bottom line here, it's pretty much consistent across the board about how we got, you know, those ratings. And like I said, you know, mostly those are in fairly good condition. I'd focus probably more on the primary facilities than I would the secondary facilities. As we look, you know, as we go a little bit further here tonight, we start talking about money. Money drives projects, right? The safety and security aspect, the resiliency aspect, we're looking at the priorities more on the safety and security standpoint. You want to make sure that the public's safe in your buildings before comfortable. I guess that's maybe a way of saying it. So I, you know, we kind of, you know, I don't want to really go into charts too much here because you can kind of flip through them, and I'm sure that you guys are probably already, you know, past, past my presentation on the, right? And for the matter of efficiency of a meeting, we'll, we'll move here to evaluation of current space efficiencies. we can assess the buildings, right? There's the assessments. Checklist tells you what's wrong, tells you what you need to fix, tells you what's in good shape. All documented, all well, well lined out. Each one of the buildings, we went in each building, and we did a cost estimate as to what it would cost to repair that. We also did a cost estimate as to what it would cost to replace the facility. But that kind of gives us the facility assessment, but it doesn't really give us an idea of whether or not the building was efficient without talking to the staff that's utilizing the building. So we, we, we held some charades with the department heads, talked to them about how they were using the buildings, how the buildings were performing, and really through the survey of the public, the survey, the, the other surveys of, of, of the employees, we got an understanding of, of how people felt about where they were working or how they were utilizing a, a community building. And, and that focus was a lot on City Hall, Quinlan, the Sports Center, and the Senior Through doing that, we also looked at those buildings from the standpoint, could we rearrange them to make them more efficient without expanding them? As I mentioned with City Hall, there's some things you can do, but there are some limitations because you do need 25 to 30 percent more, more space to, to get that to work. And then, you know, like down the list here, we're talking about levels of this, during the survey, what was disturbing people, what was good, what was bad. We collected all that data. We put that data into a spreadsheet. We, you know, we consolidated that and put that into probably a summary of findings. Roger, do you want to jump in here? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
And so I had mentioned that the, the various surveys and outreach that we had, had done to the public, to the department heads, and also to the staff. So the next slide is a summary of, of, of that. I, you know, I have all the questions here and, and all the various responses, and it is quite long, but, you know, here, as far as the public, you know, half liked the aesthetics, half didn't. Some services they thought could be easier to locate. I think it was really having to go downstairs. Parking, parking was challenging. You know, they didn't feel that the, the lobby was a very well-utilized space. And as far as Quinlan, you know, they, they felt that services were easy to locate there, but there is a demand for more programs at, at Quinlan. At the Senior Center, you know, about, almost half felt that services were difficult to find or inconvenient, and parking was difficult as well. And at the bottom of the slide, you know, there's, there was consensus among the department heads and employees that there is a greater need of conference space, spaces and meeting spaces at City Hall, at Quinlan, the Sports Center, and at the Senior Center. And for City Hall, the permit counter needs to be moved upstairs. A general consensus that there needs to be more acoustic privacy needed throughout those buildings, and that it's difficult to have new, new employees come in because of the, just how compacted we are with space at, at many of our facilities. And storage space, I, and I think it, just because of how well technology is being implemented throughout, throughout the different departments, so hard paper files are going, going to the side a little bit, but a, a department such as IT that receives hardware and has to store it and do work on it and move it out, they, they're, they are challenged for space. All right, so the next slide just gives you a flavor of what kind of questions that we asked of the public. You know, as far as who are you, are, you know, are you a resident? Are you a contractor? You know, describing the, the functionality of the building, you know, is it, are you comfortable conducting your business? Do you feel that your conversations are pu, are public or private? Do you think you need a little bit more confidentiality? That would be something that we were trying to get at, and, and the list of questions was, was quite long, and we did this through, through Open Gov. And to give you a flavor of the types of responses we had, we, and we did this for over a month at City Hall, Quinlan, Senior Center, because we, we had, we had 29 responses at, for the City Hall. We had 61 at, at Quinlan Community Center, and, and we were only able to get five responses at the Senior Center. So the next slide presents the buildings that we need to be considered. So, so what we did is we, we looked at the, the quantitative things that KPA Group had, had done regarding our buildings and how well the, the space was being used compared to industry standards for the type of work that we do. And then we took the feedback that we got from the, from, from the various members of the public at the sites. And based on that, we put together this, this estimate of the facilities that need to, need to have more space. And so, you know, you can see where City Hall or Quinlan is there, about what the additional space is needed, the, the total there in that fourth column. And then the, the far column is just a, is just a range of, of costs that would be required to construct that new, that, that building, new. Now, not all these buildings are equal, as, as Paul mentioned. You know, Quinlan, there's, there is land around Quinlan, and it's, and it's possible that it could be expanded. And you wouldn't build a new building, you would just expand the one that you have, and then that, that obviously would change that number, right? Now, the Sports Center, the only place it can grow is to take up a court or to take up an area that's being programmed. It can't go up anymore, and so that, that building is limited. It would, it would, if it's going to grow, either you're going to remove a, a court or you're going to remove and replace that building. At the Senior Center, there is land around there, so there's our opportunity, so you, you wouldn't necessarily need the replacement to get that additional size. And the Service Center, you know, as, as Paul mentioned, it's, it's one of our buildings in, in the worst shape. There is land at the Service Center, and, and there's opportunities to, you know, the, the existing building, I don't think it would make much sense to do much with that other than, than to start over again. So there's different variations, and this, this table is only but one example. All right, so the next slide. Let's see, here, I got past that. Let's go to the next slide here. So now we start talking about dollars. And so Paul mentioned that here at City Hall, we had about $13 million needs to be expended, and so the replacement in that second-to-last column, you know, that's the 60 to 65, the 25 to 30. I didn't put the ranges there on that, on that second-to-last column, but those are the choices that we have coming into our future. You know, are we going to spend that 13 million to keep the status quo with the space and functionality, or will we invest and do something else? And that can be said to any of these buildings. Each of these costs include the hard cost and, and a 50 percent markup for soft costs that would include design, construction management, environmental and contingencies. And also included in this chart is a 5 percent construction, construction escalator by year is in this chart as well. And I think, you know, from, from the different sources that Tim and I checked, that range is five upwards to 10 percent in this, in the, in this area right now for construction escalation. All right, so the next slide, we'll discuss the budget estimate over the next 10 years for secondary building. The, the last slide was for primary. This is for the secondary buildings, and as I, as I mentioned, I didn't, we didn't list them all, but just some of the more significant ones here, just to give you an idea of, of And this, this slide just sums up the, the previous last two slides and, and totals them up for primary and secondary buildings over the next 10 years. And you'll, and you'll see in this slide, and that's, and that's why I have the one that follows, is the, the amount of expenditures, it, it varies, it varies up and down rather significantly on this slide. And so this isn't what we would be recommending, that we would implement as a, as a CIP, but it just sort of shows the, what the dollar amount would be if everything was just unconstrained and, and we just did exactly what the report would recommend. But that's not exactly how we would go out and, and, and do the projects itself. And that's what this, this slide gives us one scenario where we would, because if you, if you note between the two slides, that this is much more, the expenditures are more level. The, and it was prioritized such that in years one, two, and three, we're doing the high priority, safety-related type work only in those first three years, to, to take care of the greatest needs at the various facilities. And then years four through 10, you're getting into the other, the other priorities of, of reliability, resiliency, and efficiency. Those, those are occurring in years four through 10. But, you know, and I'll, I'll just go back to the previous slide to make it, make one point. You'll, you'll note that the total on this slide is, is $66 million to do all the work. But to do the same work in this scenario, it's 75 million. And, and the reason that happens is you're, you're deferring work from the normal schedule that it wants you to do the work. And because of the different construction escalation that occurs each year at that 5 percent, the more you, the more you delay or defer something, you know, the likelihood is it's just going to cost more to do that same work years out. And it's just, but it is an estimate. So what are our next steps? This, this effort with the KPA Group, looking at all of our buildings, is, is scheduled to be complete by the end of this month. So that big stack of paper that Paul mentioned, we're looking to get it wrapped up. The purpose of this study session is to, you know, get input from, from council and, and the public, because it's very timely to, to make that input and, and get it into these reports before they're finalized. You know, we'll, we'll be preparing our budget for next fiscal year, and before we, before we recommend doing significant improvements on a building, let's say the Sports Center, and spending those millions of dollars to improve it, we're not going to just put those into the operating budget. We, what we, what we're going to do is come back to council and, and have a, and have another agenda to discuss what should happen with the Sports Center. Because what we do know is we need to spend those dollars on the Sports Center, or we need to spend those dollars on the Senior Center, or, or you name the building, we're going to spend those dollars. And if through these efforts, we think that that building needs to be expanded or it needs to be replaced, we want to have that decision made before we start to spend those dollars, because that's just the responsible thing to do. So that's, that's what we'll do going forward. But we, you know, we've told you with, you know, with the City Hall, with Quinlan, Sports Center, Senior Center, Service Center, those buildings have some, some large needs, and they have some, some pretty significant costs coming up into the future, and we want to make sure they perform. The community needs that to happen. So we're going to be spending those dollars, but ultimately, we just need to make a decision as to what are we going to do with those buildings before we recommend that into a future budget. Okay? For the long-term fiscal plan, you know, because this is significant expenditures, you know, working with, with our finance director to develop a, a plan as to how these potentially could be funded into the future, and I, and so that will go, anything that we propose in the future will be working with finance and with the Fiscal Strategic Committee on those efforts and different revenue sources that may come to us. But no, that's, that is the end of the presentation. So we have plenty of time for, for questions, and we have the right people here to provide the answers.
Great. Any questions from council? Of any of the consultants or staff?
Sure. Want me to start?
Sure. Councilman Scherf?
Besides City Attorney's Office, are we leasing any other space that we could consolidate if we had a larger City Hall?
I'm not aware of any other leased space. I know we, we have a storage at a, like a storage facility for files and office-type parts, but I'm not aware of any of that.
Okay. And then as regards the Sports Center and the Senior Center and the Teen Center, is there any thought of a new building that might combine some of those functions instead of having separate buildings for each? Because, yeah, I mean, the Sports Center is in not the greatest shape, so.
But that's the kind of question that, that's a good question, because, you know, one of the things was having a new gym, a new full-size gymnasium, and, well, does that mean you remove and replace the Sports Center to accommodate such a facility, or do you create another building that meets that need and leave the Sports Center and maintain it in its place? Those are the kinds of questions that, you know, are very appropriate.
And I, and I think the, the Parks and Recreation Citywide Master Plan will help provide some guidance as that, on that as well, whether those are, are combined buildings or, or separate buildings.
Right. I, I mean, in terms of the leasing of the space, I don't know how much we pay for the leasing of the office building where City Attorney's Office is, but you should subtract that from whatever, something like a new City Hall would cost, because presumably, we'd integrate. We'd get rid of that leased space.
Yeah, I have that number, not, not off the top of my head, but yeah, of course, would, would jump at the opportunity to be able to, to not be leasing space.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Vaidya Nathan?
Thank you. I have a couple of specific questions, and if we need to bring back our consultants, because two buildings were mentioned, the, one was the Blush House and one was the barn. Are these being used for something? Is there any usage?
The, the barn has just, you know, wood, I mean, just very, you know, just some, some storage. It's, I don't even know the value of what's in there.
So they know, the public doesn't go inside that?
No, it, it does not.
And neither with the Blush House?
Yeah, the, the Blush House is vacant now.
Right, there is some, some amount of storage that's occurring in the Blush House, and, and we are doing some improvements just as far as trip hazards, but really, we, we've turned off the water to the house. We, we don't intend on doing anything more intensive with that use at this time.
So any, any improvements to that can definitely wait?
Yes. Correct.
And then there were two other, one was the pool mechanical room. Is this in Blackberry Farm?
That, that's right.
So, okay, now we're going into winter, so we may not need it right now, but once the pool is being used, don't we need to make sure that that is functional?
Yeah, I, Paul may know the specifics of what's happening out there. I think it's probably just with the ventilation and making sure that everything is positive with ventilation, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it's failed, but it's, I mean, the signs of stress are, are great, and so we would just change that out. I don't, I don't view that particular improvement as something that would, that would change a season.
So if, if, when the public starts using the pool, we don't have, we won't need to do anything before then?
No, it's something we could probably change that fan out and the electrical work during, during off-hours and not affect, not affect the users.
Got it. Thank you. And then the air conditioning in the Senior Center as well as rodents in the eaves, these are things that could, regular maintenance could take care of, correct?
Well, we regularly trim back the trees around the Senior Center, and it's, it's amazing how far those critters can jump. So it's, it's an ongoing issue. We've, we've, we've resolved, I mean, we've, we've put work into that effort several occasions, and they, they keep coming back.
I guess we need to continue doing that. And then a more general question, in the final column, the numbers that were there, the figures, do they include relocation costs? Do they include if we were to move those services to another location in the duration you are renovating?
For the, for the City Hall number, it did, but for the other, the other facilities, it did not.
It did not? Because I was looking at, the two that I was looking at, one was MV and the other was the service yard. That totals to about $27 million if you add the two. And are they currently being used for something? Monta Vista and the service yard, the rooms?
Yeah.
They, they currently have some usage?
They do. Like the Service Center, that's the admin building. I think the, in the conceptual that we had, we would be able to build a new Service Center pretty much in front of it on the merry side of the current building and have that constructed, and, and then move all staff into that building as the current building is demolished. So we wouldn't need to be somewhere else.
Somewhere else. Because this goes back to my question way back when we were discussing the City Hall. So these would be the two buildings I would be interested in that you bring back to us during the budget session, that we really study these two to see how much it costs to improve them, instead of finding a temporary location for relocating during City Hall improvements.
Yes. We have started that effort right, right now. We, we're, that's ongoing for both Monta Vista and for the Service Center as, as potential relocation sites.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stinks.
Yeah, so first of all, for these big decisions, can you remind us of when the Parks Master Plan is scheduled to come back to council?
I believe that it's, it's early spring in the, in the March timeframe that, that they're intended to bring that forward.
Okay. Are we proposing any new spending on buildings that's not budgeted before that plan comes out?
The question again, are we, are proposing money to be spent on any of those buildings? No, no, we're not.
Okay. All right.
And we're not aware from what's been shared with us on the master plan to date that, that any of the, any buildings that were, will be doing work are going to be, you know, removed or no longer needed as part of that plan.
Okay.
There'll be a menu, just to do a little foreshadowing, there will be a menu
There'll be a menu, just to do a little foreshadowing, there will be a menu of different, different alternatives of how you could combine some of the things, say at the Sports Center, into one building or separate building. So, so there will be alternatives on how you handle buildings for those services into the future.
Right. So it, if, if we're going to get that Parks Master Plan that we waited for a long time, it probably makes sense for us to hold off making comments until we hear from you on, on that question, and also on the question of, I'm speculating here and I'm looking to see if you agree or you think you need to know something more now, but also on the subject, I mean, also on having the, our, our commission weigh in on what they think is appropriate for the master plan.
And that, that was a conversation I had with the Finance Director just this morning, was once we have that Parks Master Plan, that would likely be a good time to engage the Fiscal Strategic Committee, knowing everything, everything's on the table, what, what we need, what's being recommended, and then start talking about how we're possible funding scenarios.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm asking about whether you're looking for input from us tonight, or you're just sort of spooling us up on questions of, you know, what we want to spend on buildings that we may want to combine and...
No, I, I don't, I don't think we're looking, I mean, we're obviously hope, happy to receive any input, but tonight it was more to let you know the condition of our buildings, that we do, that we will be starting to program on an annual basis, some, some significant dollars into, into some of these larger buildings, and we're starting with the life safety programs. So some of that work, even if the Parks and Rick Master Plan said that they were going to do something different with that building, if it wasn't for, say, five to 10 years, we'd still probably want to look at some of these safety improvements.
No, no, so I appreciate that. And what, what exactly is the Montavista facility?
It's a facility out on Foothill Boulevard, well, it used to be a school. We use, right now, there's, there's a daycare facility on site, there's some storage, and then there's also karate and gymnastics that are programmed.
Okay.
Foothill and Voss.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, okay, it's that, that, it's that one building in sight. Right?
Yeah, there's, there's two, two separate buildings, adjacent, adjacent to each other.
All right. And a parking lot and so forth, yeah, on the field. Okay. Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Chang has a question.
Sure. How much for the, to hire the KPA's for their, for the survey?
We allocated and authorized $200,000.
$200,000? Okay. And then if we need to do more, how much do extra will cost?
Well, I mean, the project's going to be complete this month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, great. Our Madam City Clerk, do we have any speaker cards from the public for this item?
Yes.
No? Okay. Well, if there are any further requests of our staff, please let them know at this point, at this time. I think that it's a, a good update on our building conditions, and, you know, from my perspective, I, I look forward to seeing, you know, a little bit more detail with regard to what we're going to have happen with the City Hall. There's some pretty significant repercussions that come from whether we are going to replace that, or whether we are going to, you know, possibly improve it. I think we'll get probably some more clarity over the course of the next month or month and a half. So personally, I think it would be good to bring this back perhaps even before the end of the year, just for a quick update and a discussion on our, on our council agenda. But if, are there any other comments?
I have one other question.
Okay.
And it's, it's more as when, when you come back to us, also if you could speak with IT, the department, because they were looking at something through the software group called One Concern for Seismic Safety in many of our municipal buildings. So what have they learned? So it would be nice to put the two together, to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further direction or comments from council at this point regarding building assessment? Well, seeing none, then we'll be adjourned until our regular session opens in approximately 20 minutes. Thank you very much. That concludes the closed session of the Cupertino City Council for November 5th, 2018, adjourned until 6:45 PM. Thank you.
And get your dinner. Yep.[1788.51]